Hi, Rick. Welcome, everybody, to today's Select Board meeting, and we'll get started. With the agenda, we were thinking of swapping Barry and Barbara around since Barry said he's only going to be two minutes. Any other agenda? Oh. We have questions for you.
Um. So. Yeah, we can actually bump him to the top if you want.
Okay, you want to do that even before the minutes or?
No.
Okay, so I did have a comment on one elevens minutes. It's for the last paragraph under highway and the last sentence. The board is, oh, maybe this is different.
No, there's one that's messed up. I found it today.
Okay, that because I was thinking the board decided to hold on a public meeting or?
Board decided not to hold.
It just read weird to me. I'm assuming.
Well, originally it said, "Board decided to hold on a public meeting." And then I said, "Well, maybe that's not the way to explain it." So it's supposed to be, "The board decided not to hold."
Okay.
Basically, wait.
Yeah, so we switched the.
Yep.
The not and the two, that should work. All right. That was the only thing I saw. I don't know if anybody else saw anything else.
Oh.
I, I read it. I didn't.
The one would be. Pre-Town Meeting over there. I said, "Red, Red Fox was from North Framers Food Center, not Framers Food Center." That's what I found.
Oh, yeah. Other than that?
I think it's fine.
Should we make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aight.
Aye. All right, citizens input. Not seeing any hands raised or microphones go off, so I'm assuming we're good to keep moving. So, Barry.
I'm Barry Cohen. I have the Tinworth Crestes slot at the Rutland Free Library, and I'm also now the president of that library. We have an opportunity at the Rutland Free Library to get a portion of a sixteen point four million dollar grant. Talking about teasing that at the state level for many, many months, and we've been preparing it. The window opened on January thirtieth, and it closes beginning of March. Time is short. They are asking to get the five towns that have the consortium letters of support of the service of the library divides. If we weren't looking to get about a million and a half dollars of this grant. The grant is aimed towards larger libraries, and they have promised that they're going to spread the money across the state, different counties. So we are pretty optimistic. We're going to get a chunk of that grant. We're going to use it in addition to a lot of other money and renovate the library. New children's room, the children's area, new entranceway, a lot of new IT features. So we have a lot of needs, and this will go a long way, getting a million and a half, million and a half in the state. Go a long way towards reducing our fundraising and needs for other grants. So I'm asking the Select Board, as we're asking all Ira Menden, City of Rutland and the town of Rutland, to get a letter of support. It can be something very short. Says, "Please support this initiative. It will cost Tinworth nothing." It doesn't obligate Tinworth at all. It will help us achieve a better grant. We are working with a couple of consultants on this grant. We intend to put forward a really a A-class, A-plus initiative, and we're looking to get our slice of the pie. So. If you could please consider that. It's something, if you can hand that back, I only have a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Okay, so that comes, that has to come from the Select Board?
Yes.
Yes, but you guys said yes to it. I will write you a letter of support. Do you need them both to sign it, or can they appoint one person to sign it?
One person on behalf.
The point wanted me to sign it and.
Okay.
You want it emailed to you or?
That would work. That would work. Any questions?
No.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Yep. Okay.
So make up your mind right now.
You don't have to make up your mind.
Agenda item. Well, we're not, they're not going to meet again before the March, so.
I'm solidating all my interest I marked out. It gives me a couple of more days. It's due on March tenth or something. Grant, but I need to have everything done in advance, so time is short.
Yeah, I guess some.
This does not need to be a lengthy couple of sentences. On the town letterhead. By one, the other four, and I will have a complete package.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional thoughts from anyone or?
No, I guess, I mean. I'm fine with it. I mean, it's. As well as, doesn't have a bearing on us.
Well, except that if they get this grant, that's not money that at some point in the future, they're going to be coming back, seeing, raising our rates because they have, they need, the work needs to be done, and if they can get some money to help do the work, then that means it's less money.
What's the, the overall budget, the proposed building? I mean, there's a million dollars that you're looking for, but what's the, yeah, what's the?
Right now, it's as high as seven million dollars in total for this renovation. So you will be coming back. We will not come back. This is, we do not, will never use community money for capital improvements. The money for this, the thirty-four hundred dollars that the town goes to the library is purely for operations. Seventy percent of it goes towards salary and the rest for some other minor expenses. All the costs, seven million dollars, if that's what it costs, will come from the library's endowment. This grant, we have our figures and a couple of other grants, possibly some municipal money in the city of Rutland. Nothing, no taxpayer mind gets used to this. That's another.
So this is just support letter for this grant, just one grant?
This one grant, right. It's. We're going to be asking for about a million five. They told us the limit is about a million four, three hundred, two hundred thousand to a million four is the range that they're going to give out on each one of these projects. I've met with the head librarian for the state. I've been doing the logrolling for this for months. We're at a pretty advanced stage, but they opened up the window for these grants, and they said they're going to close it again real soon. So all the work I've done, now, now it happens. It's no more. It's pretty hard to capture this in advance. Because the state kept delaying. The state has had to hire administrators that was funded. Money has come from US Charter. They've got it, sixteen point four million bucks, and now they're going to give it up. We'll, we'll know about it in April. It's going to be pretty expedited. We'd be breaking ground in twenty twenty.
Well, for this, but. Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
So are we doing the letter?
If it, if it's just a sport letter and it doesn't have a bearing on us in the future, I'm fine with it, but. He said they're not coming back for more money, so.
On recording.
It is on recording.
That building is in.
Yes, it's bad.
Continual state. No, it's a continual state of repair. They're always fixing that building, like at some point, like.
No, no, I bet in it. It's, it's, it's.
They've been fixing that building.
I know.
It's, as long as I can remember, that building has been under a renovation of some, somehow, like.
I know. I remember going as a kid. It's, yeah, you're right. It is.
I'd like to throw my support into the library. It's a tremendous asset to our town and for everybody. I mean, good grief, it's just a letter of, of support.
Fine.
Do we need to vote on it or can, okay?
Okay, I'll make a motion to go ahead with the letter of support for the grant.
I will second it and volunteer you to sign it since you're doing paper anyway.
Yeah, no, I'm good with that. That's fine.
All right, Barbara.
Yes, nice. Good evening. I'm Barbara Neisblin. I'm with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And we are starting to draft a new regional plan. I've resolved twenty-seven our communities. So we're in the early stages of that, and the stage we're in now is, is to get input from as many people in the region as possible. And this plan covers everything from ag to land use, you know, to community facilities, to, you know, emergency management, all kinds of water quality, all that kind of stuff. So we've got a survey. I think you've seen these cards. I think Gail put them out in the office here for the survey. There's a QR code or there's an online address. It's like about thirty questions there that run the gamut of things that, you know, any resident would be thinking about, or any leader of municipality would be thinking about. There's also, you can have a chance to win this stove, this outdoor stove, if you fill it out. You have to do all thirty questions. But, yeah, that's, so we're, we're going to all of our towns, bringing this to their attention. It's going to take us a couple of years to do the plan, but we want to start with getting as much input as we can, and then we'll take that back and, and write up all the chapters, the ten chapters that go into it.
So basically, you're trying to find out how much support you have for this.
Well, the, the questions, you know, the questions are pretty interesting. You know, they're, they're what you value, what you want to see more of, what do you think is lacking in the region, what, what you want to see for growth and development, what you want to see for quality of life here, so. It's, I, I think, you know, I found it very interesting to, to answer the questions, and I think most people do. So we'll take that information, and that'll just be part. We're, we're going, we're also holding five community meetings around the region. We're doing pop-up events in every, every community, all twenty-seven. We did the story time about a month ago up at the community center. So we're spending a few months, friend, getting information. We'll be talking to the experts and, you know, municipal suspects as well. But this is the first part. Just want to bring that to your attention. And. I probably should have flipped it around from you since I'm still.
Oh, thank you. So with, with this plan, given that Rutland County covers a, a vast difference in populations per town and per municipality, is that going to be taken into consideration, or you could have separate parts for smaller towns versus the city of Rutland, or is it just going to be all lumped together?
Well, yeah, I mean, actually, in this plan, since it's twenty-seven communities, the city doesn't play that huge of a role.
Okay.
You know, it has, you know, it's the hub of some activities, and it's, it's got the biggest businesses and that sort of thing. But no, we, we really do try to address as many rural concerns as possible because basically, the Rutland region is rural. And we acknowledge that. We work with that every day. So it won't be very Rutland-centered.
Okay.
And, you know, you, you know, we've got an existing regional plan. You can always check out on our website.
Okay.
So, yeah, not asking, you know, we don't need, you know, any kind of emotion or any, yeah, anything from you folks. Just want to bring this to your attention, and hopefully you'll add your voice.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
A member of the planning commission that's not here is very concerned in the current regional plan. There's a statement that there won't be any industrial wind. Is that going to continue?
Don't know. You know, we're, we're early on in this process. You know, there's some talk up in Montpelier that aesthetics, aesthetics, you know, just something that's going to ruin a view should not be applicable when, you know, renewable projects come along. So I mean, that's in the early stages. That would certainly trump the regional plan, even as it exists. But we haven't started that conversation. There are some questions in here about renewables. Not precisely that, you know, up or down on wind. But, yeah, that is going to be a question for us to answer again, and these are, these plans are done every eight years, so things change.
Right. And so my other question is, broadly across the state, are regional planning commissions concerned at all about the power that the state is grabbing and taking with in local communities to decide the ones on me? Make, making their own zoning decisions?
Is this just pertaining to zoning, Gail, or is this, is this renewable energy too?
No, this isn't renewable energy. This is zoning in particular. It seems like Montpelier is deciding, well, your regulations don't meet this, and they don't meet that, so, you know, you're right. And some towns have worked for years and years to develop there. So my question is, is the regional planning commissions have any concern about that? Are they just going to let the state do what they want and then just do what the state says to do?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's probably a discussion going on at a higher level, higher pay grade than mine, probably the executive director level. You know, I know, for example, with the housing situation, there is, you know, the, the state is doing more about asking municipalities to change their zoning to allow for more multi-unit housing, portable housing, housing in general. So, I mean, there are things that are going on like that, Gail, but I don't think it's, you know, across the board and several kind of facets of a town.
I'm just wondering how to get regional commissions to pay attention to it.
Well, they're paying attention. I mean, the regional planning commissions have lobbyists in Montpelier. They have, they're, they have a presence almost every day up there. So they're paying attention to this, and, you know, we talked to VLCT about things as well. So. They're doing what they can.
Well, I'm just wondering if there needs, there needs to be a grassroots effort that says, hey.
Well, let me ask Devon about that.
I appreciate you passing on to that.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just curious about, you know, you know, if we have twenty-seven towns that, you know, maybe we don't all agree with this or that, but we do come down on say zoning or say renewable, or let's not even say renewable energy, because that's not really a theme. But say like the towns get together and say, "We want to control our zoning." Is there an avenue that we can, you know, that the regional commission would, you know, perhaps consider suing the state of Vermont for, you know, some of the egregious, like, new laws that are coming through? I mean, I'm just thinking down the road. I, I think there is going to be some litigation coming, you know, at some point. You know, where does the regional, like, planning commission, I mean, I mean, if you get twenty-five towns that are saying, "This is, you know, this is the bridge. This is a step too far," you know, you know, are you guys going to like, you know, lawyer up and like just start pushing back?
Guess that's a possibility. I'm trying to think if it's, if it has happened in the past.
I mean, just because it hasn't happened in the past, that would mean that it's not going to happen, you know, going forward. Because we are, we are looking at a lot of things that Montpelier is trying to mandate small municipalities that, you know, each town is different. I mean, we have a lot of, like, we have, we have very specific, we have a very specific community in Tinworth, and to just like blanket statement, you know, you have to do, like, where do we get, I mean, we have no representation whatsoever, you know, so, you know. Just, I'm just looking down, down the pike and thinking that, you know, you know, logistically, like, there is going to be some lawsuit. Something is going to be happening at some point, you know, because it's, it is just such a grievous, like, you know.
Some sort of groundswell.
Basically, any recourse if it ever came to that.
So let me take that to Devon, too. There are, there's space in the survey to make notes. So if you want to make some comments about, you know, this sort of thing. Feel free to do that. We won't read all that.
I was also a little disconcerted about some of the new proposed, like, eliminations of towns' ability to, we're looking at the energy sector in our town plan at the moment, and we're looking at things, and it is not looking overly optimistic for towns to have a voice or even have a conversation with, you know, if a development comes in, like, we are really like out of, you know, we're out of the loop.
You do have an enhanced energy plan.
At the moment, but the new, but the, the next iteration of the regional plan looks to, you know, or the, you know, it looks to be even, to lessen that even more. And then I think that has, you know, a certain contingency of the, the planning commission, a little, you know, interested to see more about, you know, what the regional plan is going to actually look like.
So, yeah, this will take us until 2026 to complete the regional plan. So it may be later than.
If we're interested, we should probably show up to the regional plan and give our input at the meetings.
Yeah, and you, you can, you know, you can keep the enhanced energy plan you have, just the minor changes or updates to it, if you will, to, to keep it, you know, in effect. You could, you know, include that in your town plan again. That is supposed to give you more say when, if there's a project you, you object to or you question, you want to change in some way before it gets finally approved by the PUC. That's the best recourse you have is the enhanced energy plan.
Except that we've been told that the PUC can, we have the best EEP there is. The PUC can still take it and say, eh.
Well, and so that, that makes it, makes you not want to do it at all.
Yes.
They, they have the authority to, to just brush it away, then why bother? Yes and no. There's no precedent yet. It hasn't, the question really hasn't come up before the PUC. You know, are you going to pay attention to this enhanced energy plan or not? You know, e- either way, you know, they, they haven't, like, it hasn't been a, that's an opportunity where they totally support the enhanced energy plan or that they just turn their, their backs to it. So we're still waiting for that precedent. So it's, it's hard to say which way they will go, because there is none.
Sorry to grill you so much.
I definitely.
I come to expect it when I.
No surprise. At least you take it in stride.
It's fine. It's, it's good to have, it's better to have engaged towns than, than the opposite.
Yes.
And, and the Tales of Tinworth have got the, the page blurb of where all the meetings are, so that everybody will know when they are, and hopefully we can get some people to go to them.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Nothing from you?
Nope, I'm just taking it all in. Thank you very much.
So thank you for coming, Barbara. All right, Eric, you're up next.
Okay. I don't really have anything earth-shattering for you. It's Monday evening. Let's see, I've been working on the safety stuff. We're servicing the grader. I ordered some cylinder repack kits for a couple of cylinders that are leaking. We've done a couple on it already, so I'm pretty confident that we can handle this. At least this one, we may get some help to the bigger one. I don't know. We'll see. Baiting the doors, the doors are almost, the man doors are, the old garage are almost done. Filling potholes. And while it's snow and all that happy stuff. Risk management update. Got most of it done. Handrails are done, the grab rails done. I need to put the towboard on the mezzanine. I wonder how, one of the things on there is the MSDS update, and I wonder how you guys feel about spending some money and maybe getting a printer for the town garage so that I can print out MSDS sheets as things come in.
I think I have a printer upstairs.
Do you?
It's not a Wi-Fi printer, but it's a printer.
Okay. Well, if you.
But you can have it. It's, it's left over from when we used to have, to have two separate things for voters to come in, because we had two districts, two computers people could vote on independently and then print to.
Perfect.
Got a hand crank on the side.
Oh, no, it's only two years old.
That'll be perfect. That'll help me out a lot, because there's a lot of times when we're working on something and I can move in at the sheet, and if I printed it out, I could take it out there.
Yes.
Not write things.
Remind me. I'll, I'll drag it.
Just out of curiosity, do you keep them in a binder or something altogether? Okay.
Yeah, we have a binder. He, he wasn't, I don't, he said we didn't have.
Okay.
And we do. So I'm going to put some more stuff in it and update it more, and then if he has something else he wants, then we'll go from there. Same with the lockout, tagout. We have some stuff down there for that, too, and he said we didn't. So I don't, I, I don't know what more.
But what kind of picture am I showing?
Yeah, I mean.
So I asked him to, hopefully he'll send me some, whatever he wants to make him happy. The other thing is, is we should, one of the things on there is a fire alarm system for that building.
Yes.
So I wonder if we want to see if we can hunt down that. They said there's a passive, passive something grant, if we want to see if we can get a grant. I know it was, when we were doing the bill, and it was like eleven thousand dollars.
And that's.
God only knows what it is now. I have no idea.
And that's just for, um, this is for alarms, right?
No, that'll be a fire, that'll be everything.
This is suppression.
That was, no, it was just an alarm and a call-out system.
To dispatch.
Dialed out, and well, it would dial countryside, and then countryside would call, probably dispatch and us or whatever. I don't know how they do.
Countryside?
Yeah, I'll lock an alarm in Malholy. That's who usually does them.
That's who does school.
This one. Yeah, that's the only one I knew, so that's where I got the quote from. I helped him. But if you want to get a quote somewhere else, that's fine, too.
Royals.
Yeah, whatever.
The school, we, as the fire department, we have not had great luck with countryside.
Okay. Yeah, that was the only one.
Oh, this is Catamount. The school.
Oh, it is Catamount. You're right. Great. Scratch that. It's Catamount.
Yeah. I've been in countryside's facility.
Okay.
Top-notch.
Okay.
So the guy at Catamount lives in Manchester, so, you know, for him, it's a pain to come up here, but.
Yeah. Shouldn't have installed it.
And so I think for the passive grant, they used to pay fifty percent, but for us, I think our max is like twenty-five hundred or something. It's based on how much insurance you buy or what your annual premiums are.
Well, I think we should go down that road because there's a lot of equipment in there. It's a nice building and we'd like to keep it, so.
So you're going to get a couple of quotes.
Sure. You want fresh quotes, so I need?
Yeah, we, we don't want something that's three years old and.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
If it's eleven thousand, then it's twenty thousand now.
So I, yeah, I would do countryside and Royals.
Make you want to cat amount, too?
Nope.
I can do that. Uh, what else do I got? I think that's it.
Are you looking at the agenda?
Yes, on safety grant, tree coating, update.
The update for that is that we got yet one more letter that says, "Well, we're way behind, but we'll let you know. We had to hire somebody to help us process everything, and don't start until we let you know," but we haven't forgotten you, basically. Don't start until we let you know, but we haven't forgotten you, basically, it's, so I don't know when we're gonna get it, it's.
Okay.
So we applying for paving grant, is that what the question might be?
Yes, the, the board needs to decide to apply for the paving grant.
I would make a motion to apply for a paving grant.
Well, I think the max we can get is a hundred and seventy-five, so.
Do we have a match on that?
Yeah, yeah, we have, well, we, we have a hundred thousand.
Currently.
Currently, right, so, you know, it's not more than fifty percent, it's like a twenty percent match or ten percent match, but. I mean, we do have the match board on it.
Right.
We just have to figure out where it's gonna go, so when we do the application, or you have to, now you have to put in the G P S points. For when you start and when you finish, and you're gonna do any.
Reclaiming.
Blining, grinding up in the.
Milling.
Lots of difference.
Reclaiming is more rebuilding the road from the foundation up.
Yeah.
And then milling is just taking off typically two inches of pavement. And then putting the two inches back, depends on how, I mean, you could mill just an inch and a half, too.
Yeah.
Similarly, it's just top coating it with a little extra.
Well, milling is getting rid of some of the existing pavement and then putting new.
Right.
New back down.
But I mean, the others. The others gotta be really expensive.
Yeah, it does improve the life of the road, but it is expensive, because you're starting from the foundation and building back up.
And then, going that route, we wouldn't get very far at all.
No.
Like, maybe a hundred feet.
Well, usually those, that kind of a thing is, you have a really bad section of the road that you need to.
Right, I think that's what, I mean, if we're gonna.
If we're gonna go from where we left off, and keep going, I don't know if there's any.
Section that requires that much work?
You and I can go look at it.
Yeah.
Man, I can bring Tom up to and, he can.
If we.
Right, but we could also move where we're gonna pave through.
That's what I was gonna kinda ask, so if we have a, a, a section that just basically needs top coating.
Right.
Can we top coat to a certain point and then utilize part of that and go and find a section of. Road in town that's extremely bad and it keeps being bad. And do, and.
It's better not to move the equipment around.
Yeah, six of one, half a dozen other, because when you get, when you start doing.
Relocating.
Well, what you end up having is a brand new piece in the middle.
Right.
And then you gotta go over here and you gotta do a quarter of a mile, and then you gotta jump down here over this other mile section. And go do another quarter mile on the other end. So it's better to just get playing, and, you know, we wanna mill and fill from where we're at, you know.
I mean, is that the worst section? I don't drive all of our roads, so I didn't know if you had a, a road that you'd really like to see fixed?
To me, I was thinking that Crampton Woods would be our next. But I think it could, I don't think we're gonna get this grant. Cause we just got one. So I think by.
Couple of years ago.
We just got one for Mountain View, less than, that was the year before last. Cause we did Mountain View, and then we went right back to the Wallenford Line and started again. So we only had one year that we didn't get a grant, pretty sure.
I mean, it can't hurt to put in more.
No, I put in for, absolutely, but I, my thought is, Crampton Woods would be the one I'd like to see reclaimed all the way to.
Re- reclaimed or milled or paved?
Reclaimed.
Okay, reclaimed.
The culverts in. We do the base and pave it.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to see happen, but we, you and I can go look at it sometime and see.
Yeah, that might be more than two hundred thousand.
Yes, ma'am, but.
Well, if we got full hundred and seventy-five thousand, it would be two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Right.
And we do have that thirty-five thousand that's, that we set aside five thousand each year for a project, something like this.
The top of it.
There'll be forty in it this year, so.
The top of it continuously gets.
It's all the way through there, it's wet, I mean, it doesn't get any sun, and it, it's broken up pretty good, but. On our current schedule and the way we've been getting those grants, it kind of, to me, it looks like it might line up with when we get our next grant. I mean, it's merely a guess. But I would think, you know, we take care of, stay on schedule, and then, cause that one's, that's not that old. Payment isn't, I mean, I was, been here, I was here when we did it, so it's less than eight years old. So. Some of this I haven't paid yet. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with Crampton Woods if we wanted to do those.
If we get it.
Yeah.
If not, then we'll just go back to. Yep, yeah, Crampton Woods is pretty.
I have the reimbursement procedure policy here. One of the things that are on there are, Eric and I went forward and reapplied to the federal surplus property thing.
Yes.
So we signed it, so we would like you to ratify that we, we applied to. On central surplus thing again, that says, if they get a greater, the falls.
Okay.
Sweet.
That's, that's a couple of things down.
The, um, busbar is not a Kenya. I got two, she's waiting on two of them, killing, she was getting one, and so are we.
Okay.
So.
Have you got an idea?
No. To, make a long story short, no. He said, buy a spring, yeah. What that, that's pretty bad.
Yep.
I could bore you with the whole story, but.
So, when would you like to walk Crampton Woods, or would you rather wait to see if we get the grant, or? I'm just thinking, I believe tomorrow's supposed to be sunny and I'm off in the afternoon, so I don't know if that would work for you, or if you wanted to wait till closer to spring, or.
Well, it'll look totally different spring than it does right now.
Probably should do it now, when you get a better idea of what the possibility, the, at the worst of it is. The worst is gonna get now.
Yep.
So.
I think we can just scrape something off the top, go again. Sure, but I don't think that's the right answer in there.
No, I, I wouldn't be surprised if you got some rocks heaving and moving and that's impacting it as well, and then probably water running under it and.
Yeah, I've never seen water in the bitches there. That's the weirdest thing. So, no matter what it does, so it's going in the ground there, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's really, it's a weird area.
Yeah, I was, I can say, if it is all ledge, maybe it's just falling cracks through the ledge, and that's, that's what's going on.
Yeah, there's a lot of ledge up there.
And, I mean, that's the other thing we'll probably run into reclaiming, depending on how deep they built that road, like, you're running into an awful lot of ledge.
I, I guess I may have never really.
This is what we changed.
Oh, the truck work, wasn't it?
Actually, that's the, what we changed last week for last month.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
We added trucks or equipment in addition for salt to go to the state bid, so.
Okay.
I just wanted some official signatures on them.
What time?
You wanna do one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't meet me at the garage, you know?
Sure. Gonna make sure I actually start working time tomorrow.
Do you do your job from house, though?
Most days, yeah. That's assumption, sometimes how long it takes gift in my bed to my computer.
The commute must be horrible.
All right, so we assigned the amended, it's camera policy, do we need to do anything else with that?
Nope, it's, it's what we changed here.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then.
This is the tap grant reimbursement request, you know, for the song finish it, grant that we're doing. And normally Meadow signs it, you guys approve it, she signs it, so you're gonna have to approve one of you to sign it, and then we can send it back.
And bank it our money back. Do we need to make a motion to approve it, just in general? It looked reasonable to me when I was looking at it earlier.
Yeah, I saw that, too. No, we're good.
I make a motion, we approve the paying the tap grant dated February first.
No, we're not paying.
The reimbursement.
Yeah, reimbursement. So, make a motion that we submit this so we can get reimbursed.
I'll second it.
All right, and then should we make you the signer, since you're signing for other stuff from Meadow? All right.
One more thing on here. Under highway, the update on the hose blaze.
Because, yeah, you just did that.
I didn't when we were looking for.
It's not in yet.
It's not here yet.
Okay.
Remakes.
Did the guy call you back?
Yes, yes, it's supposed to be here, he says it will be here by spring, he's waiting on another one also, so.
Well, then I guess, just that. And I'm certainly glad that I didn't pay him.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Cause that wouldn't have got it here any faster than that.
No, well, I did the math on when he said, and it should have been here like the first of W B, or first of January.
Right.
Something like that, so he's like, oh, it's still not here. So be it.
Right. And if only one comes in, you know who's gonna get it before we do.
Well, ours was ordered first, so we better get it first.
That will be no.
Right.
Well, killing this might be missing.
Good night.
So, review fiscal year twenty-four financial reports.
Yep, I went through that.
Nothing really jumped out at me.
Kind of, it's what it is.
Yeah.
Unfortunately. So for this, it's got swapped.
Okay.
The equipment rent should be down where astre removal equipment rent is.
Okay.
Well, yeah, these two, this four fifty, and this amount here is supposed to be down.
Okay.
Here, and that's supposed to be up there.
All right.
This equipment rent, it's, uh, the lift that he rented for the month to cut a lot of trees. And so I just put it down, I, it's more, better to be.
Yep.
I'm doing, cause it was used for the trees, mainly for the trees. It was used a little bit to paint the side of the old, old thingy.
Came in handy once I figured out how to not kill myself. Like a video game, I just let Alex do it, and he was all good with it.
And we did get the, on the revenue side, we did get those.
Okay.
And the other thing on the revenue side is, um. Is down here, there's a grant for. My planning, yeah, this is the local hazardous management plan for the fifty-one hundred.
Okay.
That was from two thousand and nineteen, we finally got reimbursed.
Better late than never.
Yeah, we got a little extra money this year that we didn't have to spend. You know, that thirty-six thousand was budgeted to get received last year, but we got it this year.
Okay. Anything else with the financial reports, or? All right, warrants and orders. Um, I did have a question on Ronnie's for one fourteen, you had four hours in the holiday column on that Friday? I didn't think that was a holiday.
Holiday day.
Okay.
If they didn't choose.
Okay.
Six, six regular holidays, and you have three that they can take as.
Okay, all right, nope, that works then, that's what it is. That was the only question I had. Did you have any other questions?
I didn't. I did not.
So.
I guess we.
Make a motion?
Yep.
I make a motion, we approved the warrants and orders?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Thanks.
Yes, so the federal surplus property application.
We just.
Yeah, just sign that one, okay.
Well, you don't have to sign it, you just need to ratify that it was that Eric and I were authorized to do it.
Okay.
Oh.
Yep.
What do we, don't put, just agree on that?
And somehow we got off the list, so when Eric called them, we tracked them down, to see if they had any graders or anything. He said, well, well, look, you used to be on here, but you're not anymore, so they sent it along and I figured it out, and now they're sending us information, there's no graders in the pipeline at the moment. I wanna say that when Eric left, because we wanted to, I think you wanted to talk to him about whether we were still looking for a grader right now or not, but.
I thought we weren't.
I, that's what I said.
I thought we figured out we couldn't afford it if we're trying to get the trucks.
Yep.
Or truck.
Right.
But, a- apparently with the, the federal surplus plus, sometimes the equipment is not very much used. And we only have to pay to transport it, because it ends up in Germany, might cost us ten thousand dollars to get it here. And the machine doesn't cost us anything, so, you know, but they got it.
I mean.
Enough, that's.
Yeah, if we can get a, a, a fairly newish grader for ridiculously low price, then we'd probably be almost a no brainer not to do it, but no, we're not. I thought we had.
Yeah.
Made that.
I thought we agreed to proceed with the truck right now and hold off on the grader.
Yes.
Or at least we discussed it, but.
Um, but yeah, I mean, it can't hurt to look, and see what they come up with, cause if they do. Come up with something that's just ridiculous, then we shouldn't pass on it.
Right, it's like that scoop loader that we got for a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That then they, they gave away for ten?
No, we sold it for thirty, we, we got offered forty, but then, really not, Eric was new, didn't know.
We did make money on it, but.
Followed the proper procedures, so then we had to do it again, and that ended up with. The guy that was gonna give us forty, and we gave us thirty.
I don't think that should have gotten sold to begin with, but, whatever.
Well, the flight board at the time needed a little extra money to make, buy the skid steer and the excavator. It was a little bit short, so it's still been in there. A lesson to be remembered if people stay around long enough.
All right, so do we need to do anything for the ratification, or just say we're?
We're good with it.
We buy consensus that.
Yep.
Yes, yep, definitely.
Sounds like we agree. All right, so, review the update to-do list.
Oh, then Eric slept, so. Well, that will work, but.
I guess we'll put that out, too.
Off and just try to. He might not have got all the way through his packet.
Well, maybe next month we could put it under the highway.
Yeah.
Section.
Sure.
I mean, we, we can still go through it if you want, but.
It's without him here.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just.
It's his to do us.
Sometimes if you don't have a list, you forget that, yeah, you're gonna do something. And that's good to remember. If you have any questions, I guess would be the easiest way, but.
I guess my question would be for the annual review of town policy procedures, or any special, do you need help with that?
Um, probably, so I haven't done it yet. I'm still gathering, you know, then I, I put some in one place, and then I find some more, and I put them in another place, and I gotta get them both together, but, yeah, that, that is a good idea to. To try and get that together.
I was gonna say, maybe I should volunteer myself, and whoever's elected. I was gonna say, maybe I should volunteer myself and whoever is elected to the select board, seems like that would be a good training opportunity for.
Sure.
For the two of us, I don't know if Kevin wants some more training on it, but.
Game for that. Whatever works out, so.
Mm-hmm. I mean, Saturdays would work best for me, I don't know about you, I know you've got a business, but or.
Saturday afternoons, because I get done at one.
Okay.
I try to get done.
If you wanna give up another night during the week for.
Last weekend, it was midnight, Saturday night when I got done, so.
I mean, would you want help like once a month or a couple times a month or? You wanna think about it and get back to us?
Yeah, yeah, because probably, you know, what we need to do is find them all and figure out what needs to be looked at. On annual basis or. Put them all in a binder. So, if I could get them together and we could get them organized, it would probably take us, you know, a day or two.
Okay.
But then to come up with the schedule and keep to the schedule. Good idea.
Anything else on this list or?
Well, number three, committee reports at some point, and now it was discussed whether all the committees we have should report. The select board, do you want them, committee chair to come talk to you, do you want a report in person? You know, is the report they put in the town report sufficient, or I don't think any. At one point, Kevin wanted to do something about um. Appointments and reappointments to establish some kind of a. A policy or guidance, so. Works a little bit smoother.
It probably would behoove the select board to find out just what boards are doing. Uh, in if they are official boards and they're using the town of Tinworth as, you know. Just would be good to know.
Yeah.
That way they're not being, they're not representing or doing something that would look or could potentially be. You know, construed as um questionable.
I would agree with that, I mean, they are something that I'm assuming the select board granted to. Form, and it seems like there should be a report back, because. We are in a way responsible for what they're doing.
Right, yeah.
So I would think that would be fair.
You just have to decide when that is, you probably don't want them all.
No.
You might know, you might want.
How many different committees do we have? Can we just be, have one come a month or every other?
Probably would work. But as organizing the policies and procedures here, maybe that would.
Yeah.
The planning commission, like, we have a regional planning commissioner, Bob Lloyd. But it's been years since we've got a report about the region commission, you know, somebody coming in here, once in a while. The people that were appointed would come in, but it is, it is helpful to know. What's going on and, you know, Cherry is our representative for transportation council, and every now and then she chimes in with what they're doing and discussing. Especially if it's pertinent to.
Is Bob, is it, is Bob still, is he? I don't mean this mainly, but is he able to?
He does it by Zoom now.
Okay.
Yeah, he's on oxygen, he's gonna be ninety in March. But he's still going to the meetings and he's still on the town's planning commission, so.
Yep.
He zooms in, he doesn't drive after garden.
Okay.
I don't blame him on that.
Yeah, and I'm not ninety.
Me either. Those stupid.
Uh, on a. Kind of a different subject, have we heard anything back from Kevin Gino yet?
No.
Okay.
Check on that next week.
Okay, or. I can too.
So anything else from the to do list, or are we ready to move on?
Well, if you see something that's on here that you'd like to address, we really need to put it on the agenda, doesn't that sound?
Okay.
Um, you know, just putting the to do list on agenda, doesn't mean. They should be making decisions about something that's on it.
Yep.
It's necessary to remind us that, hey, we said we're gonna do something about this and. Move it along or not move it along.
So the two that we talked about, the committee reports and the annual review, do we need to put that on next month's agenda to further discuss? Okay.
Like, because they're gonna put it on the, discuss the highway to do with. As action.
Yep. Like I said, saying you need one? Okay.
Well, I think we're down to a new business.
I think so, unless Kevin said.
No.
Okay. So prep for informational town meeting. I have not done that yet, it's all involved.
We have a mock setup.
Did you bring the cabbage?
Pretty much what happened at the.
That was our mock setup, and that's about what it's gonna be like up there.
Probably.
Yeah.
You know, just answer people's questions and. Holly will read the warning and. I don't think we're gonna read each individual. Agency a lot. Might be some discussion about that.
Okay.
Pretty much what the other one was.
All right.
The other one, people could have the input to say, hey, I think you should increase, you know, the budget here, X amount of dollars. This one is just explaining what the vote is and answering questions about it to help people make up their mind if they want to vote yes or no.
Okay.
You know, the fire department's gonna feed everybody after. So I came up.
It was like waiver.
I came up with an idea, I went over to look at this. The food that's in there, because I'm trying to put something in the tails about it, and I think you should only take out about half of it. And then the other half, save for town funding. Because there's way too much food. The number, yeah, there's way too much food to take out and thawed all out, because you can't freeze it again.
Right.
So I would say, you know, take out half of everything that's there and.
Gail, we tend to give the rest of it to the rescue mission, to the mission.
We do.
We decided that at our meeting.
Yeah, but you could actually have a, you know, a fireman's, you know. Game supper on town fun day, and I mean, that's, that would be a treat.
But it sounds like they want to clean out the freezer. Anyways, that was.
We can, we can. Reiterate that at the next meeting.
Well, this whole thing is working, helping me on the twenty fourth, so you're not gonna have a fire.
No, so I guess we'll just leave it the way it is.
And never mind.
All right, anything else for prepping for the meeting, or we good?
No, I'll have, hopefully the town reports will be here. Think they come. Be the sixteen to the eighteen, so hopefully it will be mailed out before the twenty fourth.
Okay.
And then we center balance and stuff, but there's not, not a whole lot of prep.
Okay. All right.
Like, we're ready to answer questions.
The Clarence of Select Board letter.
Yeah.
So this letter has been George Ambrose, he's the Clarence. Select Board's clerk. And like his letter said, at a recent select board meeting, we're trying to figure out what to do about taxes. And he is wondering if. The support would be in favor of allowing. A survey to be handed out at a town meeting to see if towns, if voters want to discuss consolidating schools or not. If there's no interest in consolidating, then they won't go forward, but if there is some thought that, hey, all of the kids in this district. Cleveland Elementary, why do we have four elementary schools? You know, how much, the, a study committee would have to figure out how much that would save, and you know, I think the bylaws are set up that. I think the towns all have to vote for it and the. The S U board has to help, you know, randomly to close the schools, it's a process, but they're just. Wondering if we could hand out a survey and gather some input, I don't, I haven't seen the survey, I don't know. Other than my George column and sent it, sent it right, so.
I mean, I don't think it's a big deal, but.
I've actually been talking to the superintendent about this, uh, because he, he recognizes that, I mean, something has to happen. Like, we, we just cannot continue to do, we can't, like, it's just not. It's not financially realistic, it's at some point that the budget is going to be, just people are just gonna start. Voting down the budgets, because it is just like, we're pouring so much money into all of these different schools, when literally. I mean, we had the conversation, it's like, we can take every student in all five schools and put them in Mill River, like. And legally, they can, I mean, that, that, and that is a something that should be on the table at this point, like, we are, you know. I, as a, as a parent, as a taxpayer, I would absolutely love to have a, you know. You know, have something to fill out on my way out of vote.
And it's a survey.
It's time that we as, you know, as individual uh towns, we start having this conversation, as much as people don't wanna have it, it is like, it's. The inevitable, like, it's the decline in enrollment, it's.
Yeah.
Yep. So I'm fine with it.
Okay, I'm, I'm assuming we need to make motion. All right, and make a motion, we. Allow the survey to be handed out at town meeting day for the Clarence Leftward letter, or serve it. Full consolidation.
I second it.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. All right, needs assessment update.
The name is Greg, and he got a long last name that I can't remember at the moment, from the regional commission came and talked to the. Planning commission at their, their last meeting, and he's gonna meet with the rec committee next week. To see what kind of issues the rec committee has. Um, and I'm assuming that he's gonna come talk to the select board at some point, or maybe he's just gonna come up with a bunch of. Questions and then come back to the select board and the planning commission, the rec committee and say, hey, are these the questions? Are these what you thought you wanted the questions to be? And I don't know if there's any particular issues that you would like to pass on him, we, we asked him. What the parameters were, and he said the state's still defining the process, so you can make your needs assessment go any direction you want. And well, that doesn't give us much guidance.
You tell you really can't make it whichever way you want, because. If they come back and say you can't, then. That's foolish to even.
Well, you can, you can explore issues, I think the, the survey is gonna ask people how they feel about this, that, or the other, and. You know, do you want the transportation to go away, do you wanna take your stuff to what one they call Hubbard's and have them coming? Fifty bucks a month, or I don't know what. Other kind of questions he, he might have, he's supposed to be drafting some to send to me that I can send to the planning commission, they gave him a bunch of ideas, so. And I don't know how many questions in all there's gonna be. But that's the update, but there is somebody from the regional commission working on it.
Is this the guy that was here a few, a while back?
No, this is a different guy.
That was um. Well, Devin was here.
Yeah.
And then Jeremy was the energy guy that was at the planning commission.
And then this is a different.
And this is Greg, is Greg is working on the needs update. So that reminds me, I think Jeremy's coming to the planning commission next week.
Oh.
About that energy again.
Okay.
Go nuclear, go nuclear or go home.
All right, so are we ready for the cell phone charging station?
Yep.
So the cell phone charging station, Glenn Merrill noticed during the last power outage that was out for quite a while, that there was a number of people that came. Here to use the town's wifi. And so. I guess some of them were, their cell phones were running down, so he thought it might be a good idea to have some kind of a charging station for them. He's still exploring, yet the fire department said, you, you just put a. Charging strip or something in the old firehouse and let people go in there, but I think we need to discuss it a little bit and figure out. Exactly what's needed and how you publicize it, and Glenn's idea was to have some kind of a little kiosk. Out front here that you, I don't know, there's some cell phones that still plug in, and there's some that sit on the pad of some sort, so. I don't have one of those.
This mine does.
But anyways, it's just, and, and you know, power runs, power is out.
Yeah.
How do people charge their phones?
Right.
And I don't know what other towns do, or.
Right.
You know, so that's why. I said I would bring it up and.
Hello?
You're out.
Hello?
Yeah, this is Mo, fire. We talked about it at the fire meeting, and if it was in the old firehouse, it would get people out of the weather. So if they came, you know, if the, if the power was out, we could actually turn the heat on, so it would be like a, a little place to come. To get their phones charged, to be out of the weather, fire department would, would cover that. Okay, so, and it seems to me like that would be a practical place, because it's not locked, there's nothing in there for anybody to take. And if people came to charge their phones, they could, they would have a place at least to get out of the weather and do that, so.
And so this charge, this charging would only be available, like, when there's an emergency, it wouldn't be there for people just to come and use. If they wanted to.
No, I think it'd be there for, if anybody needed it, they could do it. You know, from, from, who knows? Broke down car person, snowmobile or. It, you know, people on a bike, it's, it's.
Some phones need a charger, and I don't know if everybody carries a charger with them, but. You know, I, I think it's a good idea, but I think it needs a little more. Question.
Well, that, and from what I understand, some chargers, you can actually plant malware in them. So it would be, be running the risk of having people download something to their phone that they don't necessarily want on it.
Well, there should be a way to keep that off too. I mean, if you're gonna charge, if you're gonna have a kiosk outside. Or if somebody has to come and charge their phone, because the, the phones you have now don't work when the power goes out. You've got a few hours and then it, they're done, so. You know, I think that's a. Pretty easy risk to take, I mean, it could happen on your own phone.
It's melody now, if we do cybersecurity for the town office, could that be hooked into this? I don't know, just a thought.
I would have to check with Zach, so I don't know. The other question I had was, I've gotta check with the electrician to make sure that the old firehouse. Has electricity when the generator's on. I assume that it does.
I think it does.
But I think we probably need to check that.
I think it does, but yeah, we need to check it.
And then so, how does this get publicized?
Tales. Front porch form.
I've offered to do that, once we get it set up.
Yeah.
Very.
I think we could discuss that Saturday, that same Saturday, if it needs to be discussed. I mean, the fire department could put one out there. Irregardless, but this would be putting it in the old firehouse, which seems more practical.
Long as there's a simple list of rules that people can follow, I mean, the fire, the old firehouse does get used by people. And so you wanna make sure the users don't disturb it, but you also wanna make sure that somebody doesn't come in in the middle of somebody having a meeting there and. Want to thin down and sit down and wait for their phone to charge. Just, just some real simple guidelines would be.
It shouldn't be a problem, and I don't see it being used that much.
Right.
It's just a, a service available, it's just like the bag that people can pull outside and get internet.
The internet.
You know, so it's, it's, you put up a sign, I think there's a sign out there that says hotspot or something. Or what does it say?
That sign fell apart.
It did say wifi av. It did say wifi available.
Right, so if somebody needed it, there's a, uh, you know, so that, that just means charging available. I don't think it's.
Right.
Honestly, with most cars having the ability like. And I think the ability to have a wifi like.
But one of the other things that, one of the other things that we brought up at the fire meeting was like bicycle. People out biking, hiking that could use it, I mean.
Yeah, as long as they've remembered to bring the charging.
Mm-hmm.
You take your charging cord with you, where do you take yourself?
It kinda sounds like it's a.
Liking or hiking, so.
It kinda sounds like it's a solution in search of a problem to a certain extent, but.
But it's not gonna hurt anything to have it there for that one person, I guess.
Uh, okay, I mean, you know.
I mean, I'm a type A person, I'm not charging cable in my car, but I would charge it in my car while I was driving to Rutland and.
Yeah.
So, and we're willing to do it, so.
It's just a matter of having it being in that building would make more sense, fire department could put one outside. If we wanted to, but it, it'd make more sense during an emergency for somebody to have a place to.
Inside.
So. It's not so much if, it's like where, is it, is it okay that we have it in the old firehouse?
We just need to make sure that when the generator kicks on, that the old firehouse has power, which I'm pretty sure it does.
Well, it has to have its own meter, so it has to come either through, through the fire department or through the town. So, and both of those are charged. So it's not a separate, it doesn't have, there aren't three meters, there's one on the.
Right.
Town and one on the firehouse.
Right.
It's, yeah, pretty much, yes, it does charge. But that's something, I mean, that's irrelevant, we can figure that out.
So if you agree, if the select board agrees that we can use that as a charging place, if you would. Make approval of that, I will set the stuff up in the old firehouse. Um, and then I can wait from, hear from Gail whether it'll be connected when the generator comes on, but it will be available for people who need it when we do have power.
I'm fine with it going in there.
Think it's unnecessary, but.
It's a feel good thing.
Well, it isn't gonna cost the town anything and it's a service, so.
Well, I mean, it's gonna cost the town the phone bill and unless Glenn's donating the equipment.
It's not gonna ca- cost the phone bill.
Oh, you're gonna pay it?
Yeah.
We are gonna pay for it.
That's wrong, the electricity is the. It's the town's electricity that feeds that place.
I guess is there. Any additional liability with having people. Going into that building?
It's not locked, they can invoke the wind anyway. The only time it might kick in is there are times when it's. Used by the fire department and it's locked before the, the tag sale, it's all the stuff that's in there. So it wouldn't be accessible then, but you know, logs, there's not a storm, if there is a storm, then somebody would come and unlock it from the fire department and sit there while people charge their phones, I would assume. That's why I say there needs to be just a little list of.
Yeah.
Guidelines that how it's gonna work.
We can hash out the guidelines.
Yeah.
At the meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I guess we can do it, it's the.
Find it and, and see if it's necessary in your.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's not necessary, then you can say, get rid of it cuz it's not necessary.
Yeah.
I mean, there's enough, there's enough outside outlets that if someone needed to, and again, like, most people are gonna just plug in their cars or just turn on their cars, like it. It's a level of, you know, like Mom said, it's a feel good, it doesn't, you know.
Alright, so I guess I will make a motion, we put the cell phone charging station in the old firehouse, if it's needed.
I second that.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Alright, feedback form review.
There are no such things.
Okay.
That was quick.
Member concerns.
You're the members, you got the concern?
Alright, miscellaneous correspondence or mail?
Nothing that hasn't already been addressed.
Okay. I have no need for an executive session, do you?
No.
Alright, so our next meeting will be the twenty fourth at three, which is the town in, meeting informational meeting. And then the one after that is March fourteenth at seven.
We, so now. I got the twenty fourth.
I have you right here, Captain Bob, and so you guys are gonna count on Tuesday the fifth.
Yes, alright, I warned my boss I might be late on Wednesday.
Fourteen.
Oh, it doesn't take that long, we won't.
Okay.
I know you said that, I was like, I'm just gonna warn her anyway.
The, the fourteenth is a regular.
Yes, it's to be the regular one. I gotta make sure that's on my calendar.
Uh, Mr. Murphy, are you gonna be able to count them?
Yeah.
And then.
Just not gonna let me count my own ballot?
Right, no, we're counting officers.
But I'll count the.
So.
It's a presidential primary ballots, there's gonna be a ballot for officers.
On the, on the fifth, or the, this Tuesday, the first Tuesday is what the day we're counting. I should put that on my calendar.
Counting, you have to count after the ballots are all passed, Kevin.
No, yeah, no, I know, I just didn't know, I couldn't remember what the day was, I guess, about the counting, fifth. Fourteenth is a regular meeting.
Marshall, are you gonna count, be able to work that day?
Not me. Yeah, I can.
What time do you need us there, or should we be there most of the day? Okay, seven o'clock?
Yeah. Yeah, we have other people that come in for two, three hours at a time, okay, and then counters come at seven.
Alright. Anything else? If no.
We're rushing.
We can adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Alright.
See you all on the twenty fourth.
Huh?
Good job.
Thank you.
Turn off the recording.
I just gotta remember it's supposed to be aired tomorrow at one.
Yes. Yeah, and I can do this, so when we.
They're literally giving away burn barrel, they're giving.
Hey.
It's a burn barrel.
It's a nice looking burn barrel.
An outdoor stove bonfire is.